Okay, with that, we will call this meeting back to order. We do not need a roll call, correct? Do we? No. We're all here. I don't know. I got on my agenda. Go ahead, roll call, please.
Okay. Councilmember Gatewood? Councilmember Sander?
Here.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Here.
And Mayor Terry?
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. Will the clerk please read the television announcement?
This meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Wednesday, October 4th at 9:00 a.m. and Thursday, October 5th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can be ordered from the City Clerk's Department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. Before we move on to the pledge, considering in light of the Las Vegas incident last night, I request a moment of silence for all of those lost and all of those fighting for their lives. Thank you. And with that, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation. Tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mr. Sean Harrison, who I see over there. You can do it from right there if you don't have to come to the podium. And then our invocation will be by Reverend Stephen Krog? Am I saying that correctly? Okay. Kroeg, maybe? Okay. We'll give our invocation, and he is from Grace Lutheran Church. So everyone, please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pray as we gather, God of all wisdom, goodness, we ask that you direct our thoughts of this meeting, the discussion of this meeting, that Rancho Cordova experience a kindness, an optimism, an encouragement, and a grace for one another. And so lead us according to your infinite wisdom and infinite good and infinite wisdom. In this, we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move on to item 9.1, which has become our favorite part of every meeting, which is to hand out Measure H checks and our Community Enhancement Fund. And so with that, I'll call up Stacy Delaney to... There she is. You have too much phone over there.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Stacy Delaney, and I'm the Community Enhancement Analyst for the city. This evening, we are presenting ceremonial checks to five organizations that were approved for funding through the city's Community Enhancement Fund. These projects and programs support local Rancho Cordova priorities, including education, youth, the arts, and economic development. Mayor and Councilmembers, please come down and join these groups as they receive their checks.
Thank you for wearing blue.
Right, I got the memo. The first check being presented this evening is for AMWIN Public Waldorf School to purchase string musical instruments for their music program and to create an outdoor seating area at the school. The tables and the decorative fencing will actually be constructed by students at Cordova High School and Kenny High School. AMWIN Principal Nisha Tudorichi is accepting the check for $15,500. The second check is for the Cordova Community Council Foundation to provide the award-winning Crocker Art Museum's Art Arc to Rancho Cordova elementary schools. This program brings the world of art to Rancho Cordova students and their families and culminates with a community art night at the school for both parents and neighbors to attend. The check that will be presented this evening represents the amount awarded this fiscal year, and they were also awarded the same amount in fiscal year 1819. Amy Hiromoto is accepting the check for $28,375. The third check is for Soilborne Farms Urban Agriculture Project to provide a comprehensive and coordinated school garden program at Rancho Cordova school sites with gardens. This program will increase the capacity of both Folsom-Cordova and Sacramento City Unified School Districts to offer and maintain school gardens at their schools. It also strengthens the city's prior investment in the construction of school gardens. Sean Harrison is accepting the check for $30,000.
Thank you. Congratulations.
The fourth check is for the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce for the continuation of the Explore Rancho Cordova program. The program provides residents, traveling sports teams, and employees of Rancho Cordova businesses with valuable information about the city and its amenities. This is done through a variety of sources, including, but not limited to, a website, a mobile app, newsletters, quarterly welcome receptions, and home delivery of welcome bags. Diane Rogers is accepting the check for $45,000. And the last check of the evening is for 916, Inc. to bring their creative writing workshops to Rancho Cordova students. The workshops provide enhanced arts-based literacy educational opportunities for students at elementary, middle, and high schools within the city. Through the process, the students will become published authors. Justin Self is accepting the check for $46,501. This concludes tonight's check presentations.
Like I said, our favorite part probably of any meeting. So with that, we'll move on to item 9.2, AMWIN Community Guild School Garden Presentation from Wendy Weston.
Hi.
Oh, you need the clicker?
There we go. My name is Wendy Weston. I'm the treasurer of the Wynn Community Guild, and this is our principal, Nisha. So we're excited to just share a couple of photographs and just a little bit of how we're doing and how the year went with getting the garden going this year. So you all go ahead and push the first one. So there was a lot of overgrowth. This garden was actually developed in the '90s by a sixth-grade teacher. And then things just kind of changed, as you know, about AMWIN, and the garden got overgrown with loads and loads of privates and just crazy weeds and whatnot. So that was the first big project, was just trying to open the garden out so we could see what was in there. And so that's a wonderful picture of what it looked like. And we had kids on the side. They also got to use some major tools, and they loved it, got to rip out some roots and everything. So appreciate that. That was super fun. And then the next thing we did was start to till the ground up. It was really uneven. There was random concrete blocks in weird, strange places, things like that. So we spent a day of tilling just to get it leveled, and then got the... Then we put down cardboard and then put in mulch and a pavement path. The other thing that we were able to do is put up a bamboo fence, which you can't really see in the way that the shadows on the picture. But there's a really crazy dog that shares the fence line with us on the backside of the garden. And so the middle schoolers would come out, and then the dog would be like, "Rar, rar, rar," out of control, and scare the bejeebies out of them. So having the fence line up there with the bamboo fencing has eliminated and really de-stressed the dog also. And we've met the owner of the dog while we were cleaning up the fences, and he was super friendly and "whatever you need, let me know" kind of thing. So that's been a real pleasure for us as we've been working with that. Also, if you notice, there's a little shed back there. And it's not that little. It's a 70-square-foot shed that we were able to purchase from Cordova High School's Construction Management Class. They had one at the county competitive event that they went to, and I happened to sub for him the day that that event happened. And I'm like, "We'd love that shed." So it worked out really great, and now he's who's going to help us build those picnic benches. So we can turn that. And then, as you see, we're starting to get it leveled out. We brought in a lot of fruit trees. There was a few already there. There's a fig tree and a few other things. But we've been able to get in some pear and apple, pomegranates for the fall, and then the spring/winter is the citrus and the guava. And our whole goal in the middle school is they're going to learn about agriculture and how to harvest. So we were trying to think of fruit trees that would actually bloom in the season that they're going to be in school and participate in that. And then I happen to be a Master Food Preserver for the County of Sacramento. So Mrs. Scott, who's the... One of the middle school teachers, who's the lead teacher working in the garden, and I are talking about ways to dehydrate and to make jams and jellies and try some different things and process the fruit. So pretty excited with that. And then you can see our new path, which we're super excited about. We were able to put in planters. We have an ADA-raised planter for... To meet that compliance. And then we've leveled it out with compressed granite. And now there's wood chips that are actually covering the whole back area, not just the little corner in the back that you can see. You can see the bamboo fencing up, which has really made it such a lovely space. And currently, the eighth graders and the seventh graders are going out there every day to work. And it's providing them a place to be middle schoolers, since our school was originally a K to sixth, and now to have it K to eighth. We really needed a place for middle school students, because we all know that middle school are a little bit different than their graders, and they needed their own identity. So we're really grateful. That's been a pleasant place for them. And then, let's see. We'll go to the next slide. So we've got just some family. They're gathering fruit. We're really excited to have that ability and being able to get to the fruit. We have an amazing fig tree there, and we're working... Our next push now is to work with the Healthy Planet USA to further curriculum, and then working with Soilborne Farms to help us to establish curriculum that will actually help our teachers as they're learning how to teach about gardening. So it's been really an adventure. And we're hoping that this also has empowered the teachers to feel like they're able to pursue this now that there's a place for them that doesn't feel so overwhelming. So we're really grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for our beautiful and educational space.
Thank you. Hang on. Any questions from council?
Were you able to provide irrigation to the new facilities?
Oh, so we were really lucky. We already have irrigation. We just had to get new keys, because our keys were all stripped. When you don't teach a sixth grader how to twist it correctly properly, they just destroy it. And then our whole school had an emergency irrigation system, and Nisha can go ahead and talk about it.
So one of my amazing teachers applied for the Project Green, which works like a grant through Sacramento City Unified School District and part of Project Green. Knowing that we were working on gardening, they redid the irrigation, updated our entire system. So we were lucky to have that in combination with the grant here for the garden.
That's great. One of the challenges we've seen in other local schools is that while the teachers are present and the kids are present during the normal school year, things are fine. And then the summer, someone forgets to turn on the irrigation or water, whatever, and kills all the fruit trees.
Yes.
And everything else sort of, you know, gets lost.
So what we had to do this summer with the irrigation, half the water being shut off, is there's a summer program that was on site. So we coordinated with the older grade teacher to come and help the kids come and do the watering, and then we did have the family that's harvesting there come a couple times a week to make sure during the summer. And then that's the next work along with Healthy Planet and Soilborne to figure out how do we keep that being sustainable during the summertime when we're not there? Ideally, it'd be great if you had like a week that was your assigned week, and then you could harvest anything that came up during that week, too. So, you know, lots of thoughts of how we're going to...
Interesting idea.
Yeah. I would like it to glean free fruit. I mean, come on.
Well, thank you for this. I know I... As I used to be the school board member there and live over there, and I can tell you that that garden has seen its ups and its downs. At one point, yeah, there was somebody who really got into it, and they were starting to do something with it. And I hadn't seen it recently, but yeah, I knew that there was concrete in there and a lot of other fun things to stub your toe on. So I'm glad that you were able to get your arms around it and do it. So thank you so much for what you've done there.
Well, thank you, and thanks for working with us. I know it was a little crazy trying to, as things kind of changed last year, so we really appreciate your support and help.
We appreciate it, too.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we'll move on to public comment. So citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the consent calendar... Excuse me. On the consent calendar or not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provision of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do. Angel Ball?
Good evening, city council and city staff. I would like to flashback to July 21st, 2014, to Measure H. The city council... It's a part of the resolution I want to read to you. City council adopts the resolution. Residents of the city of Rancho Cordova will be provided an opportunity to vote on a ballot measure November 4th, 2014, in the general election. If approved by the voters, the ballot measure would enact a half-cent sales tax to enhance city services, facilities, programs, including, and it goes to say, enhancing anti-gang and youth violence prevention programs, increasing neighborhood police patrols, fixing streets faster, expanding children and teen and after-school programs, removing blight, revitalizing vacant buildings along Folsom Boulevard, building recreation facilities for seniors, working adults, and children, and other general city services. Last week, I attended a workshop Tuesday, September 26th, about your plans for Measure H spending. It was very informative, but I walked away very disappointed. My neighborhood was paved 25 years ago on July 10th, 1992. Measure H appeared to be the solution. RCO2 has been on the list for road repair and off the list for road repair over the last five years. My road looks like an alligator. I wish that you would stop the plan for saving money for legacy projects and spend it on the roads in my neighborhood. What happened to fixing roads faster? Please give more money to Public Works to fix our streets. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for listening.
Any more comment cards?
That's all that I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to council reports. Councilman Gatewood?
So I got to give my first couple speeches. Killed it. Sorry, modesty at all times. So the Talagana event, which is the flower festivals where they bring, I guess, basically all the citizens into a school, and we watch about... It's basically about mothers and rebirth and basically blessing the whole area. It was amazing. Me and Bob went together. We got given robes and got to see the whole community, and they said they partied there till about 11 o'clock at night. It's nice to see the community funds actually going to throw the event, that they're actually starting slowly to wean from us and be able to do it solely on their own. So it's interesting that we have the biggest one in the region, and I think they had over 1,000 people show up. At the same time, I went to another event that basically helps out to mentor our high schoolers and help them become leaders in the region. I guess they've adopted a lot of our... I guess it would be our high school students, and helped them to become better leaders in the region. And so I got to give another one of our... Re-give the check to that at the casino night for them. So I did those two things for the last couple days. Thank you.
David?
Well, it's been a while since I've given a council report. I'm not going to bore you with slides from travels, but at some point, I might pull Linda and show you slides of interesting infrastructure things I saw while overseas. You might... Linda once came back from a trip to France and showed us pictures of, let's see, hydrants, fire hydrants, public restrooms, and curbs. And the joke was, "Linda, turn around! You missed the Eiffel Tower!" But that's sort of how we travel now. So I've got stories about how they do traffic lights in Germany, right? That are really very fascinating, but perhaps for another time. So I did attend, on behalf of the city council, Sunrise Mobile Country Club's event on Saturday. Great event. They had sort of a barbecue and a lunch set up to celebrate the Measure H project, the Community Enhancement Project that we funded that provides shuttles for residents who have difficulty walking from their location in the country club to the central place where they get mail and can have meals together and other communal events. So there are these very fancy golf carts with drivers that have been trained, volunteers from within the community. It's a great win-win situation, being operated by volunteers, by the homeowners association there. They have a great facility set up, thanks to our financial commitment and their personal involvement, and it was a very nice experience. I was happy to represent us there. I also attended the region's business barbecue last week, along with at least one colleague. And... Two. Oh, you were there as well?
He was the guy in the shorts.
Ah, that's why. Okay.
Ninety degrees.
And I chaired the Capital Southeast Connector, JPA, which I am this year, for a meeting last Friday. And I don't know if you're all aware, but Derek Minima is the new executive director there at the connector. I wasn't sure if that got announced while I was absent, but we're very excited about that, and he's got a very aggressive approach to some funding sources. And we are very hopeful, given the current funding environment for transportation projects, that we can see increased momentum and acceleration of building along that quarter. That's my report.
Bob?
I'm just going to just kind of repeat what was said about the Talagana. It was really a lot of fun. My wife and I went out, and she joined the ladies doing some of the dancing, and I was able to just watch, and that was good. Everybody seemed to be enjoying themselves on that. And as I said, they lasted a lot longer than we did. We left sooner than... Much sooner than 11 o'clock at night. Something I was very happy about is we've been working on the Veterans Village, and we do have the $13 million tax credits, which we needed. So in five or six months, we'll start building the next 50 apartments at the Veterans Village. So that's going to be a very positive thing. I'm still waiting for the word on the Phase 2, which will be working on the second story of the building there. But I'm really, really pleased with that Veterans Village. We can start working on that to get some more veterans off the streets and give them permanent housing there. Only a block from the VA Hospital. That's one of the nice things about it also. And then the... I was given an opportunity to hand out some more Vietnam lapel pins in Folsom. They don't have an organization there that hands them out, so they asked if I could do that. And I went there with my wife, with Loriann and her mother, and we were able to see the gentlemen who were there, the former submarine veterans. I hadn't had a chance to meet them before, but the gentleman who was in charge of all that said that he was in the submarine off the coast of Vietnam, but not in Vietnam itself. But that's like a lot of Vietnam veterans. If you are active duty between November of 1955 to May of 1975, then the Congress said that you are a Vietnam War veteran. And so we were handing out 23 of the lapel pins with the veterans that were there, and there were 42 total. So I left the ones there who were going to come later, and the gentleman in charge of that was going to hand those out when it was time. But it's a wonderful feeling to be able to get the lapel pin and thank the veterans for their service and their sacrifices and finally welcome home, because they didn't get it when they were coming home from the... During the Vietnam War. So that's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Linda?
We had a two-by-two meeting with Golden State Water to talk about their rates and their plan for continuing to upgrade their facilities for the wells that serve Rancho Cordova and converting the few houses that are left from a... An old-fashioned meter to the new ones that the state requires. And I also had a meeting with people who are bringing a charter school to Rancho Cordova. It's going into the other half of the building that used to be Scowee, over on Lincoln Village Drive. And this sounds like a really exciting school. They were in the Bee this morning, one of the wave of charter schools that's coming to town. And attended Regional Transit. At Regional Transit, they've just adopted a new five-year contract with Paratransit, but this one, you'll be happy to know, David, actually has... This one is much more economically logical. There's been a lot of work at Regional... At Paratransit over the past, like, 18 months to prune costs and make sure that RT was just paying for the costs specifically to provide the mandated service, not for a whole host of other ancillary things that really did not... They cost too much money, and they did not have anything to do with providing the service to the people who need it. And so that was really important. The Sacramento Kings have their first preseason game tonight, and Regional Transit is starting the same Golden One service that they had for all of the events at the arena last year. Everyone is encouraged to take the train, because it's only $2.75, as opposed to paying over $10 to park downtown. And the trains will run something like two hours after the games are out. And the games this year are at 7:00, so we can go back to the old schedule of going a little earlier and getting home a little earlier. Regional Transit also has found a new source of funding that has to do with credits for fuel that they converted to some special natural gas. And I can't explain that one, but Albert probably can. We are also being asked to look at a lifetime pass for everyone over 75. It used to be in place, and with the recession, it was eliminated, and now they're thinking about bringing it back again. And then the best part, they are letting the contract, even as we speak, to clean up all of the metal-looking instrument houses along Folsom Boulevard, and they will be wrapped in the same railroad pattern that the original three were wrapped in. And we should see those go to construction in six weeks to two months, something like that.
Are they going to wrap the building that it turns out it looks like the city owns, that's closest to the intersection of Coloma and Folsom? Because we all assume that was a Regional Transit building.
I know. Albert is working with them on identifying which of the instrument houses will be wrapped, and I don't know whether that one is included. Albert might know that.
Something we should look into. And I don't know if any of them require the wrought iron treatment that we got for one. I think it was the only one that had...
That was... That's one of the really big instrument houses. And it's similar to the one that is across the street from Safeway. I think that's electrification. The others, the smaller ones, are instruments for various parts of the track.
Yeah, the idea was just to get rid of...
The really big ones are electrification, something like that.
The idea was just to get rid of any chain link around the buildings, but that may be the only one.
Yeah.
Albert, did you want to address it?
Albert, did you want to address it?
Sure. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And the, the instrument house in question, we're evaluating at this time if it can be demolished. It serves a purpose that is somewhat redundant upon completion of our current Traffic Management Center project, project. And so we may be able to demolish that. If not, we'll make sure that it gets wrapped with the others.
Super. Thank you.
Very good.
You can rent it out to a Sharp Shack.
You can't get it.
Only people who've been around a while laughed at that for a reason.
It's not large enough for a Limeor.
Is that it? So I'll keep some of these fairly brief. I think I might have sent this already to council, but there was a press release that went out from the Air District letting the region know that the, that we attained ozone, the ozone attainment level or goal, which we still had three more, or two more years to get, we actually achieved that this past year. So two, two years ahead of schedule in, in reducing ozone emissions within, within the region and the testing for it. Let's see. I want to thank the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce for a great golf tournament on Friday. Had a great time. The weather was awesome, which was great because it was a 1:30 start. And I know that, that was not Diane's fault by any means. It also meant that we got another charity tournament in town that morning. It brought a whole bunch of other golfers. I also want to thank Loriann and the rest of the staff that had been working with It Takes Lincoln Village and the Cordova Meadows, and I'm missing on what their name is because that was one of the first times I had heard it was at the meeting. But they held a prep meeting for the six attendees that are going to be attending the Navy Works America Community Leadership Institute. I was able to kind of help sneak them in through my, my day job for them to get some really world-class resident engagement training. So they're going to spend, I think, four days down in LA learning from resident leaders from across the country about how to become resident leaders and what other people have done in their community to become resident leaders. Then they come back and spend a year on community projects in their own community, and then they have to go back to this same gathering where they will teach new people that are coming to this gathering for the first time. It's actually the largest gathering of its kind in the country. And it's the first time that we've had residents from Rancho Cordova go, so I'm really excited about that. I was also, had the honor of representing the city at the National League of Cities Community and Economic Development Committee, meeting that was held in Henderson, Califor-- God, I keep saying Henderson, Califor-- Henderson, Nevada, not this past weekend, the weekend before, where I actually had tickets to Vegas Village. But it was, it was a very eye-opening experience. For those of you who aren't familiar, they're a city of about 300,000 just south of Las Vegas and share a lot of the same struggles and issues that, that we tend to. You know, a lot of the industrial area that was, is what founded Henderson is actually still unincorporated, even though the city is completely developed around it. And they've even had a couple of master-planned communities that actually went badly up. They had one that had three golf courses, championship golf courses on it, that essentially Las Vegas has like 10 to 15 extra golf courses than they need. And so they're actually treating a high-end country club living development as a redevelopment project. So they went back in and decided to take out so many golf holes, convert them into housing, convert other ones into trails and dog parks and a lot of other things to try to use the land more, more wisely. Makes me really happy that we have not designed or planned any golf courses inside of our city limits because it's like trying to build parking garages when we know that autonomous vehicles are coming. But it was very interesting, meeting with different city council members, city managers, economic development directors from across the country. Kurt, wherever you are, sorry, I didn't think to invite you. I'll invite you to the next one of those. And I also want to thank staff and the vice mayor and our city manager. We completed our, well, for the most part, we've completed our, our exercise around the Bloomberg Mayor's Challenge. We've got about three weeks left to submit our idea, and we're kind of honing in on what our solution is around connecting our residents to each other and the assets within our community. I think I said that just about right. Actually, one other thing, had a great time at the ribbon cutting for Think Smart Inc., which is a new cloud hosting company within Rancho Cordova. They, I'm not sure where they were before, but they've been existent, they've been in existence for about 20 years or so, but I want to say about 30 employees, great-looking facility out there in the Kogor area. And then lastly, I had the opportunity to speak to a handful of first graders, and I just love telling this story that evidently in first grade in Elk Grove Unified, they learn about community leaders, and they, they learn about leaders. So they learn about, the mom and dad are the leaders in their house. The president is the leader of the country, the governor's the leader of the state, and the mayor's the leader of the city. And evidently, when that came up, my son made sure to tell his teacher that his dad was the mayor of Rancho Cordova, and she made sure to explain this to me later that, you know, the kids say the darnedest things, and, you know, she just kind of took it with a grain of salt until she had to go to the website because she had to make posters of a picture of the president, a picture of the governor, and lo and behold, the kid in first grade was telling the truth. And so from that.
She didn't expect that from your son?
She, well, she just met him. She did say, first graders say the darnedest things. She's had kids come in and say that because they watched Moana over the weekend, that they went to Hawaii over the weekend. So, so some unique things come out. But I had the opportunity over the last few weeks to speak to all of the first graders at Sunrise Elementary about what it's like to be mayor and what the city does and answer questions. And got some, and again, kids say the darnedest things, but it's, it's a whole lot of fun getting to do that. And then lastly, I'm pretty sure this is happening at most schools in the area, but October 4th is National Walk to School Day. And so there's walking school bus activities and events throughout the city. I would encourage you, if you have the time, some of us are walking kids to school anyway, so it doesn't really, it's not that big of a deal. But there are rallying points to walk from parks and from other gathering points to school to raise awareness about getting outside, being healthy, and, and this is a great addition to our Moving with the Mayor initiative. So with that, I'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick items. For several months, we've been working with a team of business owners in the community on developing economic development strategies for Mather, the airport, and the business park. And today, our director of economic development, Kurt Haven, and myself had a meeting with John Reed, who is the director of the airports, very productive discussion. And over the course of the coming months, we will be working very closely together with them to develop some strategies and some options related to the business park and the airport itself. And we're hopeful that this would be a good partnership that results in economic value for the community. Also, we are starting, I think, this week, in the next few days, you'll be seeing some wayfinding signs that will go up in the city. This is a project that, a relatively small project funded through Measure H that will highlight some of the assets in our community, and we're putting some cool signs around the city to direct the public to those assets. That's all I have.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the consent calendar item. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Do I have anything that, actually, are there any speaker cards for the consent calendar?
No.
Is there any items that need to be pulled?
Seeing none, I'll move approval of the consent calendar items 13.1, 13.2, and 13.3.
I'll second that.
A motion by Budge, second by McGarvey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Consent calendar passes, first carried. We have no consent public hearing items. We have no public hearing items, so we'll move on to our regular calendar items. And our first one is our homeless action plan. And I see Stefan walking to the, the mic.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Stefan Heisler with the Economic and Development Department, here presenting the fiscal year 2017-2018 Homeless Action Plan. So tonight, I'm giving this presentation. Council has already directed staff to work on several homeless activities. Now that most of those are up and running, we want to put those into one clear and concise document that council, staff, and residents can find to see exactly what Rancho Cordova is doing with homeless. So tonight, I'll talk briefly about the current homeless situation in Rancho Cordova, and then also briefly describe the action items that we will be undertaking this year and also go over what we expect to come out of those action items. So this year, staff's best estimates for homeless in Rancho Cordova is approximately 200. Depending on who you ask, could be more, could be less. One of the more official counts of homeless in Rancho Cordova comes from the point-in-time count that was recently done in February 2017, and they found plus or minus 212. This, this third bullet here, trying to get a sense of the, the social cost of homeless because we know that homeless, being homeless aren't, aren't free, but have an impact on society. So we took a look at some impact measures that have been used in other places. Particularly the one used here, we, we copied the methodology used in Los Angeles from their cost versus, cost of homeless versus housed report in 2009. And so we estimate the, the cost to law enforcement services, healthcare providers, and homeless assistance programs for approximately 200, 200 homeless in Rancho Cordova is about $6.9 million. Moving to the action items that we will undertake this year. Top of the list, we are working towards the completion of Mather Veterans Village Phases Two and Three. As Bob mentioned, Phase Three is going to be under construction within six months, now that it has tax credits. Phase Two, we will be hearing back this week whether we get a Department of Finance award. Their meeting is on Wednesday. Hopefully, we'll hear back before the end of the week. But if that is a success, then Phase Two will also be under construction probably within the same timeframe, it's about six months. We expect those to be completed probably around mid to late 2019.
Can I, can I actually repeat that? Because you just said two and three would be going, so the, the transitional?
Yes, so Phase Two, yep. Well, we're, that's the one that we're waiting back for this week. So Phase Two, which is the 46-bed transitional facility, we will be hearing back this week whether we get a Department of Finance award.
A Lytech, a Lytech award or?
Not Lytech, Department of Finance, community-based transitional housing.
California?
It is, yes. Yeah, they have a small $25 million pot of funds.
Sorry, I hear Department of Finance. I think Department of Treasury.
Sorry. So if we get that, Phase Two will be under construction about the same time, and both of those will be completed 2019. So yeah, Phase Two, 46-bed transitional facility. Phase Three would be another 50 units of permanent supportive housing, just like Phase One. Second on the list is we will be continuing our Sacramento Self-Forward Navigator contract for one navigator. If I can highlight some of the, some of the highlights that Navigator was able to produce over the last 12 months. They were able to place 52 people in housing, 39 people in temporary shelter. Help, they helped 129 people get the documents they need for housing. They connected 36 people with sources of income, 34 people with primary care, and 34 people with health insurance. And we estimate the impact of all those services to be about $550,000. So he's been very productive.
And what did that cost us?
That cost us $55,000 last year.
With 10 to 1 ROI.
And how many did we find permanent supportive housing for?
52. Well, not permanent supportive housing, so there's, there's different kinds of housing.
The last time I heard this report, the answer to that question was two.
So that, so the housing includes permanent supportive housing, assisted resolutions or self-resolves, transitional housing, which typically is at least for a year or two, and also mental health and addiction treatment placements.
13? Is that what I just heard in your numbers? 52 minus 39 that were just overnight?
That was separate. Shelter, temporary shelter was separate. Number three on the list, we will be continuing the Sacramento Self-Help Housing contracts for the renters' helpline and the housing counseling. That's funded through our CDBG program grant funding. Last year, they were able to field about 430 calls for fair housing and housing counseling to keep people from becoming homeless. So that's an important part of the homeless. Okay, number four, implement homeless outreach team. This is the, the team that has two full-time police officers, one full-time code enforcement officer, and also the navigator. This team will be addressing panhandlers and trespassers as well as continuing camp cleanup activities, particularly in the business areas, and encouraging through education programs with those business owners to prevent camp creation through environmental design. This team will also free up the pop team for other activities. Number five, we will be continuing participating in Sacramento County and regional efforts to increase the effectiveness of existing homeless services in the county, in Rancho Cordova in particular, and attract grant funding to the region. Through our collaboration meetings with the county and other cities in this county, we're, we're staying aware of what's going on. We're learning from each other, making sure that we're not making the same mistakes and helping each other out. Also, particularly with attracting grant funding, we will be, the city of Rancho Cordova will be participating with the county in their No Place Like Home. They have a, a task force that will be helping the, the county go for the No Place Like Home funds. That's $2 billion that will be allocated to the various counties in California. So we'll get a piece of that. We're gonna, we're, as staff here in Rancho Cordova, we'll make sure that we are working with the county so that Rancho Cordova's homeless will get benefited through those funds. Number six, we will be cooperating with Rancho Cordova Homeless Assistance Resource Team for the winter shelter. Last year, RC Heart was able to provide shelter for about 30 people per night over 10 weeks last winter. This year, we'll be connecting our navigators so they'll be even more successful with helping those people who are sheltered overnight to get into services or housing. I know RC Heart is also looking at implementing a mentorship program, which, similar to our navigator, would help provide a hand-holding effort for the homeless to, to get the services they need. Number seven, we will be collaborating with homeless service providers in the city to discuss homeless efforts within Rancho Cordova. This group has already met. It includes Rancho Cordova Heart, Folsom-Cordova Community Partnership, Sacramento Self-Help Housing, Folsom-Cordova Unified School District, our navigator, our neighborhood services, and others. So this team, we're going to help try to collaborate efforts already within Rancho Cordova, make sure that people are connecting to the services of each other organization and that we can get some efficiencies there. Also discussing what barriers are and, and how we can be of service to them. Already in our meeting with them, housing came up as a major concern as well as connecting homeless with employment services. Number eight, we will be participating in the Regional Emergency Services Grant Rapid Rehousing Program through the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency and Volunteers of America. This is, this is a one-time grant program for rapid rehousing in Sacramento County. I think the participating jurisdictions are Elk Grove, Citrus Heights, and us. This is, this is nothing that we had to apply for, it's something that the county did through SHRA, and we've been able to participate in that. We expect between 12 to 15 families will get rapidly rehoused in the next year. And finally, number nine, we will be staying current and involved in legislative activities related to homelessness. I don't think there was any major legislation in the last six, 12 months on homelessness, but we are staying abreast of what's out there and make sure that Rancho Cordova's interests are being met. All right. Total cost of these action items for this fiscal year is $743,000. An additional $700,000 will be leveraged from other sources. So like through the navigator, through this ESG program, which is funded through the state. Also, Rancho Cordova Heart is getting private donations. All that adds up to about $700,000. And also, finally, when Mather Veterans Village Phases Two and Three are fully funded, they will be leveraging about $26 million from all funding sources. So the housing outcomes for this fiscal year, and I, and I just focused on the housing outcomes. There are, there are other outcomes, but these are just the housing. So we expect five to 10 households will be assisted into permanent supportive housing by our navigator. Also, 15 to 20 households will be assisted into self-resolving or assisted resolutions by our navigator. Also, the rapid rehousing program will, will help about 12, 12 to 15 families. Our navigator is working really hard, so I, I, I think 12 is going to be the low end of that spectrum. Also, transitional housing, we'll have five individuals housed in transitional housing this, this fiscal year by our navigator. Temporary shelter, we think 50 homeless individuals or households will be given temporary shelter. This is motel vouchers, so up to 16 to 20-day visits in a motel. Also, I, and I forgot to put it here, I apologize, but temporary shelter, Rancho Cordova Heart will again be helping 30 people per night this winter. And then finally, through our navigator, we expect 30 individuals to be placed into mental health and detox facility placements. Overall, going back to my-- Overall, going back to my, the estimate of the social cost of homelessness, through these efforts this fiscal year, we expect there to be a reduction. We don't know if we will reduce homelessness this year, because more people will become homeless, but we expect a $2.2 million reduction in the, the social cost of homelessness. That concludes my presentation. If there are any questions?
Questions for staff? Go ahead, Dave.
The, the switch from using POP to the homeless outreach team, I think is a pretty critical policy change for us. There should be some cost savings in that, I hope, because we were spending an awful lot of our POP team's time just on homeless issues. And obviously, the impacts caused by the homeless are, are pretty extreme in our, in our city. They certainly rank right up there, you know, I think in our last poll of citizen satisfaction of the top six items, four or five of them were homeless-related, in terms of what people were really concerned about in Rancho Cordova. So I'm hoping that that is a more efficient and effective way to sort of deal with those negative impacts of homelessness. Do we have an idea when that's gonna be implemented, or what sort of measures we might apply to see if we are making more progress at, at limiting the impact of homelessness?
Yeah, Curt Haven Director of Economic Development, that's a very important project to the city. We were given about $180,000 in budget to add a code officer and to, you know, add services in the police department, and the chief can talk about this if you wish him to. We found the money in the current police budget to make this happen. So we'll be a lot more efficient. The program will start in October, we'd like to come back to you in a couple of months with some figures and some, to be able to, you know, rate how this, how effective this program is. Our businesses are very excited. We had the Foz, which was an over, off-duty program, overtime program, that we have since stopped getting ready for this project. And then you're, I agree with you, the POP team really needs to be back in the community, and that's where we're gonna see a lot of the advantages to this program. If there's any more questions, the chief could answer them. And this is more than a homeless program, this is, you know, for our trespassers and our vagrants who may or may not be homeless, and working with our businesses.
Cyrus?
Councilmember Sandy, if I may elaborate on this some more, we, when we looked at this program, we saw that various pieces of our organization and parts of our organization deal with this issue, and we felt that a coordinated, consolidated approach may be more effective, both from an outcome standpoint and also financially. So we looked at this, and we had a program that was dedicated, what we call the Foz, the Folsom-Cordova Zenfanal Area, the Business Park. We also had some of our code enforcement, our navigator who was also involved in some aspects of it. So we felt that by putting all of these resources together and creating a task force or a dedicated team that deals with this, this issue, we'll be able to not only make the process a little more efficient, but also have some level of contact and continuous relationship with some of the homeless communities, so we can identify who's truly a homeless and who needs assistance, and, and those are who, those who may not actually be homeless, but they resort to panhandling, vagrancy, and other activities. So, so this gives us the ability to, to deal with this issue more effectively. And the last conversation that I had with our police chief would think that this, we should be able to implement this and start the process in about 30 to 45 days. So the team, the team will be fully in place in about 30 to 45 days.
In, in previous discussions on this issue, going back a decade, we've had PD surveys of homeless folks in our community, and the data, even the most recent report I think we got from the, from the navigator indicated this as well, that the presence of, you know, mental health issues and detox issues were pretty extreme among this hardcore homeless population. So some of the data you're presenting is about those who have just slipped into homelessness and can sort of easily be slipped out, but there's this population that will not easily slip out. They're very resistant to any sort of interactions. And, and numbers there in past year's reports have been 60, 70, 80 sort of people in or around Rancho Cordova at any given time that sort of fit into that hardcore category.
The chronically homeless?
Right. I'm, I'm not sure anything we really outlined here is gonna have much of an impact on, on those hardcore cases. I think as a region, maybe as a nation, we haven't really figured that out. I do believe that it is Sacramento County's responsibility as an agency, they're the human service provider. Under state law, that's how we're organized, cities do not do this work, counties do this work. It's really their role to pick up something to aid that really hardcore population. Is there something we could do as a city to greater encourage the county to step up and assume their responsibilities?
I think, I think, I think we, we are, our navigator is, is doing part of that work through creating relationships with them and, and then catching them when, maybe the moment that they are ready for housing. We're also gonna be coordinating with the county for their No Place Like Home, so that, the No Place Like Home is targeted to only the mental health or the mentally disabled folks. So that housing will, will become available probably in the next five years. Working any, any additionally with the county as far as their services are concerned, we, we are recently connected with the community service team, which is kind of a triage, mental health team that the county provides, so our navigator can, can make that phone call and get them right out. They'll, they'll drive down and, and triage somebody. So we, we hope, we hope that, we hope that some of the, some more of those services will be coming to Rancho Cordova in this year. It is, it is a tough population.
It was just a couple of years ago, I don't know if everybody knows this, but the county went literally to having zero emergency mental health beds available, zero in the county. They just lined out funding for it during the last economic downturn, and they've slowly brought it back, but it's nowhere near the level it needs to be to address this population. And so, you know, City of Sacramento and, and us and every other city in the county are sort of being put in this vice of having a problem, and the solution is not one that we're funded for or empowered to provide. It's, it's a county problem. So I would encourage us as a council to think about that, and ways or actions we could take to encourage the county to actually step up and assume their responsibilities here.
David, I would agree with you. I mean, I think the last time we've probably seen this, this type of reorganization of, of services like this is when they closed down mental health services in the 80s, and they just, or the 70s, and just turned them onto the street, you know, the institutions and whatnot. Not that they were doing a bang-up job anyways, but I would tend to agree with you. I, I think the, the approach that the City of Sacramento has taken with this, and going after the state funding and saying, if, you know, county, if you are not going to step up and do it, because Stefan, I think you're right. I think they're gonna figure out where they're gonna put these triage shelters and everything else, it's gonna take them five years or maybe more. You know, they've got the funding there, supposedly they're sitting on a boatload of mental health funds, depending on who you ask, that they just aren't spending. Forget that they turned over the beds, but Sutter and a lot of the healthcare providers have been stepping up, you know, to me, I think, I, I like how, how you've arranged some of this. I think it's a little misleading to say 7 million or so in cost, because a lot of those costs are services that we don't control. So the savings that, what we're spending, we're saving in, in some instances somewhere else. Yeah, it's not necessarily us saving it, but the community saving it. But I think if you look at the way that the City of Sacramento is prioritizing what they're doing, they're looking at what are the highest users of their services, right? So the high, they, they can identify who the highest 25 users are for ambulance rides, and how do they get those people housed? And they said that that, that, you know, the top 25 users of ambulances accounted for 775 ambulance rides in one year, right? And so how do you focus in on that? But again, they're then saving themselves that. For us, it's county, do your job to save yourself money, right? And I think, you know, we've done our part when it comes to Veterans Village or Community Campus or a lot of other things. I will say though, that Sacramento Self-Help Housing, I think their model around the housing of, of chronically homeless, I mean, I, I don't know where they're getting the housing units for it, and I still think that the biggest barrier to the success of the navigator program is that they don't have anywhere to put these people. You get somebody on the street that says, yeah, today I wanna get, I wanna get clean, I wanna move into somewhere, and it could be 60 to 120 days that that person has to stay on the street before they can find them somewhere to live. I remember sitting here and asking Ryan, what do you need? Let's go get five navigators and really set this up, and he goes, I have nowhere to put them. And so still, the biggest struggle that we have as a state, as a region, is that if we don't continue to build and build a lot faster, this will continue to compound. And you'll, David, to your point, you'll have these people on the fringes that can't afford their rent, but don't want their kids to move schools, will live in their car and take their kids to school. We're gonna have them, and they're gonna push further and further, the folks that were living on the fringe and, and even, you know, the, the transients and the people that are panhandling and all the other problems that come along with that, those numbers will continue to increase. As long as you live in your car, you live on the street, you're gonna start to medicate yourself in whatever way you can. And this will continue to exacerbate if we don't find housing, but if we also don't try to address it as much as we can. So, I mean, I think, I think we're light years from where we were when I started on this council with this plan, and trying to control our own destiny, but I think we take a page out of what the City of Sacramento did. I mean, and maybe it's figuring out between us and them and Elk Grove and whoever else, that do we somehow figure out how we can share in their, you call it no place, there's this whole, the whole person care program is the City of Sacramento, but I mean, you know, if there's one thing that we can take from what the City of Sacramento is doing is that they're not waiting for the county to figure this out for them. And I think a lot of us are frustrated in just saying, let's keep pushing the county, you know, they, they've come up with a plan, but you're, it all hinges on a couple of major triage centers that they've gotta figure out whose neighborhood gets them, right? And the neighborhoods that they've talked about so far, until, till you see the political will at the county supervisors to, for somebody to vote to put it in their own district, where are we? But I, I, I thank staff, because I, this is, this is probably the most like concise and straightforward way of explaining what our plan is, and the fact that we have a plan now, and it's not just, we're gonna give tickets to people that are panhandling, we're gonna give tickets to people that are camping. We can do that all day, and we're just going to move the, we're gonna move them from here to over here and back to here, which is what, you know, we hear from our Vins all the time and a lot of their frustration, because, because criminalizing it is not a tool towards eliminating it. Eliminating is getting these people off the street, getting them into housing. And that's gonna, and some of these things, we can't control. We can't control the county, we can't control the housing market, we can control what we zone and how fast we can get things built. And there should be some more resources coming from the state that maybe we can get our hands on, and maybe thinking more creative like the City of Sacramento did. Bob?
Yeah, one thing that I think the county has done, which I'm very glad for, is the Mather Community Campus. That program has been going on since 1994, and they were thinking about having to close that down, because HUD took $2 million away from it. Don Lottoli was one of the pushers on this, and over a million dollars from the county when it was given to them, so that program's going for another year. And that's got over 300 people who were former homeless in it. And that's been going on for that long, it's been going on that well that people don't even know the program's there. But it's over 300 people in Rancho Cordova who are former homeless, who have a place right now, and who end up being able to get back in jobs and get back with their family and everything because of this program that's been going on. And I think that's one thing that I think that is a very positive thing for the county, is that they put that money in to keep that program going. And another thing I'm kind of curious about, we're looking at this 200 homeless, now, is that 200 homeless hardcore homeless, or are we talking about, you know, the program that we got that gave us our All-America City was a program for some of the homeless who were living with family, who were living with friends, who were living in a motel, but they are listed as homeless because they don't have a home of their own. So, you know, how much of this $6.9 million is spent on them also?
So I would say that, that 200 figure includes those who are literally homeless, who, who lack a nighttime shelter. That does not include the, the people who are, are doubling up in houses or living in their cars. That's, that, that number, as kept by the Folsom-Cordova School District, is actually quite a bit higher. I think this year, their number is around 800 students who are sharing housing or...
It's important to understand the definition between the two. The Department of Education has a completely different standard for what is considered a homeless child. If you were sleeping on the couch at grandma's house for two weeks, and then you're sleeping at your aunt's house for two weeks, you're homeless, so...
Or, or if it's even a threat that that could happen, you're homeless. What was that number that we had?
It's very broad. It's a much broader definition, and normally it's, it, it estimates about five to 10 ti- depending on, on the state, five to 10 times more than the, the point in time, so the 200 that he's talking about, is in January, a group of volunteers went around all over the county on one night and tried to count every homeless person that they could, and that's our 200 count, which is up 50% or so in the county from last year, or two years ago, but a lot of that had to do with, the river was really high, and so these people that normally would camp down in the Merrick River Parkway couldn't. And so they were in parking lots and in people's front yards and in shopping centers, where you could find them a lot easier. They weren't hidden in the bush, in the back of trails and things like that. So we, we've seen this across the region, that this number is up, and a lot of it had to do with the weather.
Yeah. How many were in that, David, on that program, program for the SOX, it was 486 or four or something other like that? Yeah, it was some number in the, in the 400s, and that was the homeless number, that Department of Education number that the school district had 10 years ago now.
Yeah. And now, and that's only two-thirds of the city is Folsom-Cordova if we're talking about, so that's just there, yeah.
I'm curi-, I'm curious, staff, do you, do you have any idea about what other jurisdictions are doing? I mean, the Folsom, Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, Galt. I know Citrus Heights, based on numbers I saw in the paper, has a homeless program, more significant, problem more significant than ours. Do we have any idea what they're doing compared to what we're doing?
They're all doing pretty, pretty, pretty similar activities. Citrus Heights has their own navigator. I don't, I don't, I can't speak to any other programs. I know Folsom is, is working more and more with their community to, and their faith-based community to try and build more services for the homeless. I think Elk Grove is, is kind of the major player piloting the Sacramento Self-Help Houses, the transitional houses for homeless.
They own two homes.
They own two homes themselves, yeah, the city.
So I mean, we've stepped up pretty, pretty large as a jurisdiction with Mather Veterans Village, no one's close to that, let alone hosting Mather Community Campus.
Can I, can I comment about that, Bob? Because one thing that you said was, you know, applaud the county for funding Mather Veterans Village for another year. To be very, very frank, if they did not fund the community campus, they would not close it. And one of the sites that we could end up with a triage shelter in this region could be here. So one of the things, because I agree with you, I like that they did that, but there is not ongoing federal funding to continue the community campus indefinitely. So unless the county continues to make that commitment, so while we might want to applaud them today, making sure that, that we understand that that, that's a program that, that we embrace and cherish, and yes, it's in our community and we want to support it, we'd like it to continue in perpetuity. And depending on the, the political will of the, the county, you know, I, I would never envision them just closing it, but they could use it for something completely different that I think would be of concern to the community.
Right, they, that's something that was discussed, of having it turn into a, a triage, and that's not what they want, because that would be a completely different kind of an animal than what we've got right now, that we just have open for anybody that wanted to come, and that's not the same thing. This is something that is a well-programmed way of helping people to get back into life, and it's been very positive so far.
I totally agree with you. I guess the only thing I want to make sure that people in the audience might have heard from that is that there would be an option of just closing it, that if they didn't have the funding, they would just, that, that we wouldn't have those homeless people that are trying to transition to, to market-rate housing there, that, that there's, that there's a choice between it operating and not operating. And the other choice is that it could be operating something else that we may not be as fond of as this program. So one, one of the things that, because there are people out there that probably would like to see it closed, but if it was closed, it would be open to being used for something that I don't think the community would be as one to embrace. Even the people that are opposed to it operating today, the way it is, would not like what the alternative is, because it's not closing it. Additional questions for staff?
I would be really interested in a report back on how we transitioned to the, the homeless outreach team. It was 10 years ago, the first time I served as mayor, that I had one of my toughest days ever on the city council, and that was a community forum at Sunrise and Douglas, at the new school, and that gym was packed, and they're asking me about a grocery store, of course, but the thing I was asking them about is why aren't more of you shopping at Target and Rayleigh's and Safeway and, and Walmart? Because we thought originally...
Because we thought originally, with growth in Sunrise Douglas and the new city, people who moved in there would shop here, that would help Folsom Boulevard and the older part of the city, and we didn't see it happening. And the answer that became clear in that public meeting is those neighbors, those, that part of our city was not comfortable coming north on Zinfandel because of the panhandling and the homeless that they saw there. This was 10 years ago. And I asked, how many people in that room are, are in this situation where you're not going to participate on, at these stores that are near Folsom Boulevard? Nearly every hand went up. It was a horrible day for me, because it broke the expectations that we had as a city and the benefits that we would have from that growth. And it all circled around this same issue. And here we are 10 years later, still struggling with it. So, you know, as one council member, I'd say something has really got to change with those impacts in the Foz area, because it, the impacts are long-lasting now, very damaging, they divide our community, they hurt us economically, they hurt our image, they drive down our property values. Something's got to happen, and I really hope.
And this was the exact topic that we came up with in the mayor's challenge around, how can we address this and what we're trying to compete with, was not, not homelessness necessarily, but there versus there.
Yeah, it, it divides us. It's a very dangerous and unhealthy situation. So, it's, it's bad for us economically, it's bad for our image, it's bad for our crime statistics. I really hope this is, this is the magic bullet.
Well, and you got to remember also, the business owners have all gotten together, and they're also getting ready to put together a PBIT. So along with this comes the business owners getting together, having their own private security that's going to work directly with this.
I hope that happens. We've tried that before.
We've tried that three times, so I'm not sure who's saying they're going to do it now, but we've been studying it and funded, trying to do it for, on Folsom Boulevard, two times?
For 20 years.
Yeah, I guess before we were the county. So, a PBIT would be great, you know, if you got enough of the business owners, but usually you got to get them to where they don't have a bunch of vacant buildings that they're paying for, plus you're adding more costs onto them. I, I think, David, you know, is this plan going to work? It's going to do something. It's saving some resources. But again, whether it's the county or whether this is a housing question, you know, the fact that how much, and, and, you know, we can zone all the housing and stuff that we want, but you know, when it takes nine months to approve an apartment complex in town, how much longer does it take before somebody else wants to come in and offer multifamily? And if that's not affordable to the people that we're talking about, and again, Veterans Village is a great example, that'll house 100 people, maybe we'll get 15 to 20 of our homeless people in there, right? But we're also housing the homeless from a lot of other parts of the region. So, you know, this is a wholesale question for the entire state and the whole West Coast, is that, you know, I can be as liberal as I want, except if you want to move more people near me. You know, you can look at some of the most liberal counties in, in California, and they voted for Hillary overwhelmingly, and they haven't built a new house in 20 years.
Yep.
And until we change that mentality across California, and, and some of these bills were biting at the edges that they just passed with the state, and that's a great first step, but they have to double and triple down or we're going to continue to have this problem. Because as many resources as we have, if there's nowhere to put them, we're going to continue to have this, and, and most of these people are not moving. They're not going to leave. One of the most eye-opening things about that point in time count was that 85% of the people that were counted in Ranch Cordova, and this was the same for just about every region, they said they're from Ranch Cordova.
Right.
They're from here. That, that we didn't import them from the, the city of Sacramento, we didn't import them from the county, they're our homeless people. And there were stories that we heard about, families that couldn't afford to stay at, not Birchwood, what's the apartment on, on?
Sycamore Square.
Sycamore Square, that couldn't afford to, to stay there after the rent increases. And, and some of them went to Natomas, in South Natomas, to rent apartments, and were still driving their kids back here. I just wonder how many of those families couldn't afford an apartment over there too, and they're just sleeping in their cars and taking their kids to school? Because at least their kids would be going to the same school. It's one less, you know, change in their life. And the statistic bore that out all over the place, that a lot of this economic side of it, and again, yes, they're not the ones that are causing the most headache to the businesses and everything else, but they're homeless too, and they count in that number.
Well, we don't have a, we don't have a detailed report on the, on the 212, but we did have a detailed report with our last Navigator report, and it did not show the sort of economic impact causing homelessness that you're describing. What it did show was enormous mental health and detox issues. Something like 90, 90-plus percent of those individuals we contacted fell into that category as opposed to an economic motivation for homelessness.
Well, keep, keep in mind, so the point in time count, and we can get you those numbers, I've seen them for our city, they do show that. The Navigator is spending their time with the high, the most chronically homeless individuals in our community. So they're going to go and talk to the same guy four times a week on the Parkway and in the shopping center where he's got 10, you know, shopping carts full of stuff and everything, all of the ones that our Vins are making sure to always point out that, you know, they're, they're behind Sportsman's Warehouse, then they move over behind the gas station, you know, next door because they got evicted from there and somebody else moves in. Those are the, that's who the Navigator, that's who we're paying them to go talk to. They're not going and finding the person that, you know, spends a week in, in, in a, in a hotel or a motel, and then a week on grandma's couch, and then two weeks in their car.
Because they're not causing us economic pain.
No, but they're homeless just like everybody else.
It's the chronically homeless that are causing us all the economic difficulty.
Yeah, but we don't want to accept that people aren't adequately housed in our city either.
So, do you reckon somebody else came to speak to this item also?
Do we have any public comment on this?
Yes, we do.
Good point. Thank you.
We have one speaker card, Carrie Hess. Is she here?
Good evening. My name's Carrie Hess. I live in the Capital Village area, just off the Village Green Park. And I was really happy with all the things I heard from the report. I had decided to come here before. I read the agenda online earlier, so I'm not here to complain, but I did hear a lot of talk about the businesses and the impact on the businesses, and I didn't hear much talk about the impact on the residents, so I do want to speak to that. Just to let you guys know, I do have a master's in public health, and I do work in public health, but not in the Sacramento area. And before I speak to my personal experience, I want to thank Rancho PD. I really appreciate that you guys have been answering our calls. I know that my neighbors have been calling regularly because of the homeless in our area, and they've been very responsive. I had the pleasure of being out of town for a wedding a couple of weeks ago, but I heard from my neighbors that some individuals went through on garbage day and tossed all the garbage into the streets. And I heard that Rancho PD picked it up. And I don't know about you guys, but I would rather our police department spend their time doing other things besides picking up trash. But yeah, I really want to thank the PD. My personal experience has been, we've been seeing an increased homeless people in the park, and I know that most homeless are harmless, however, it only takes one incident to make you feel unsafe, and unfortunately, that incident has already happened to me. We were walking my dog about three weeks ago around the park, and a couple came up to us and said, don't go, don't go any further, there's a man with a knife. So, I no longer want to walk my dog in the dark alone anymore. I'm also a runner. I get up at 5:00 AM to run, which is nuts. But I don't really feel comfortable running in the dark, and unfortunately, none of my neighbors want to get up that early to run with me, so unfortunately, I'm going to have to do it after work. I did hear from council member Sander that you're interested in what other communities were doing, and I do want to point out the Bridge to Housing Part, Bridge to Housing Project that was done in West Sacramento. You should take a look at that. And I believe through that project, they were able to secure permanent housing for 68% of the homeless that participated in the project. So if you guys are interested in looking at something that worked, I would check out that. Thank you for your time.
And since she ran out of time, I will just say that the Bridge to Housing Program has won a bunch of awards, and if you're not familiar, they took one of their hotels that was going to be knocked down, turned it into a transitional or a triage center for four months or something like that.
Right.
And housed a bunch of people.
It was a temporary, temporary program, I think.
Because, well, and the motel's now knocked down. So that, yeah, if we had, if we had the stock to do that or the facility, it would shown to be very effective. Any other questions for staff? Any other guidance staff needs from us?
Not at this time, this is just informational.
Okay.
I would just like to second our residents', our residents' comment. You know, social media in Ranch Cordova is filled with stories like that, and it's just a situation, I think, after 10 years of hearing it, I don't know how much longer I can stand to hear this story. We've really got to make some sort of a change as a society, rather than to keep living this way so that a resident doesn't feel comfortable jogging in their own neighborhood. I mean, that's, that's nuts. That's unacceptable. We've got to find a better way. And, you know, if it's finding some way to get the county to step up, finding a way to help the, help the state do something real, because I'm, I mean, I saw what they did this year in terms of legislation for affordable housing, I'm not sure it's going to make any kind of a dent in homelessness. They're just not funding, they're probably not funding counties adequately for the challenges in front of them.
You know, as listening to, to, is it Karen Talk?
Carrie.
Carrie Talk. And thinking about the, the new programs that have just been signed, it would be really great, Cyrus, if we had a presentation, maybe from the city attorney's office, I know they, they sent us all something on the internet, but if, I, I should add that, I would add that under future agenda items, if we could have a presentation more in-depth on what the, what all those bills are supposed to do, so we can figure out whether any of them really might help us or not, and what's, what we should be implementing or going after.
Could I make a suggestion that probably maybe instead of the city attorney, that our government affairs team and maybe our, our newly hired lobbyists give us that briefing?
Well, anybody who wants to can participate. I just know that Myers-Nabi put out a, an email trying to explain what had happened, so, you know, whatever Adam wants to do, but we just need a presentation.
There's a lot of housing regulation that probably is buried in that. I mean, the crux I got from reading the summary was, the state chose to remove a lot of local authority with regard to where affordable housing could be placed. So try to bypass us, try to cut our fees, try to eliminate local comment, try to eliminate local environmental review of, of proposed projects. So, it really wasn't a reform on their end, it was them sort of knowing better than us where things ought to be located.
Yeah, but you know, on the one hand, if you, I mean, you're right, but the goal was to minimize the impact of NIMBYs, because there was an article in the paper just within the last two weeks talking about exactly what, what Donald said. And I think they were quoting building industry sources or region builders or somebody like that, you know? It's, it's one thing to talk about constructing affordable housing, but we have significant number of cities that have either not built any affordable housing, period, or every time somebody has proposed a project, the effect of NIMBYs has been to reduce the numbers of units, make the lot, the lot sizes larger so that you get bigger homes, which eliminates any aspect of affordability and so on. So, also, those are kinds, are the kinds of things that we do need to understand more about this.
And it's not just the Bay Area, but I mean, I can just tell you.
No, I'm thinking Southern California.
Well, no, I, I mean, I was going to give you two examples. One was that, going back to my high school reunion in the South Bay Area, that pretty much every community that I had to drive by is about the same size that it was when I left 20 years ago. Like, if cities like ours, if, if cities in the Bay Area were doing what we were doing as far as zoning and mapping and approving things, we wouldn't be in crisis. The problem is that there are no communities that, I mean, literally, 20 years ago, the city, the city of Santa Cruz, which was a city I was living in before I moved here, was 52,000, it's 55,000 today. It's been 20 years. So, I mean, when you see, and every community looks like that, except for maybe San Francisco. So, you're, and, and they, and actually, they're growing, but they're, it's all vacation rentals and Airbnb, so they're, you're not actually adding for the population. But you also have, I mean, most of you heard this, you know, I have a, my day job, I do housing development, affordable housing, for farm workers and helping people build their own homes, and I had to agree to build nine large homes, market-rate homes, in order to get 17 affordable homes. If I got into court, we would have won, but it would have taken three or four more years before we ever built there. So, developers all over the place, even if they have the rights and they think that they can, they win, they take it from some of these local jurisdictions. So, yes, that, that is what that bill is going to do, but it's also because there are communities up and down, especially our coast, that have no interest in providing housing for regular people.
So to Linda's point, a lot of that discussion will probably be about controlling our own destiny versus getting run over.
You're right.
Yep.
Right.
Because, I mean, one of the biggest, one of the things that we continue to see from just our region is, home values are not going up because people are making more money here. It's because people that make more money in the Bay Area have nowhere to live, and they're moving here. That's, that, that is the, probably the main factor driving all, that and the lack of housing here even.
Yeah, that's one of those cyclical things that happens every 20 years.
Yep.
So Bob had a comment.
Adam, you were going to say something about the, what was put in by Myers-Nabi?
I'd just say, we, we have pretty fully analyzed that new legislation, and so it wouldn't take us a lot of work to help out the housing staff in presenting that material to you.
Thank you.
So with that, I want to, well, I know Cyrus wants to say something too, but I did, I did want to just reflect, this is probably our third or fourth homeless discussion since I've been on council. We've never had to stop the meeting, we've never had to turn off the, the cameras, we've never had to ask the PD to escort people out of the room, and so I just want to thank the community and everyone that came here today, that we, that, it, I remember, maybe it was, wasn't the last time, I think it was the time before that that we talked about homeless, that the people that showed up couldn't believe that we didn't have police at every door, and couldn't believe that we just sat amongst ourselves and talked about this type of an issue. Because the city of Sacramento cannot even have a hearing on this without it becoming very unruly and, and difficult, or Stockton or a lot, a lot of other communities. So the fact that we can sit here, disagree and have a good conversation with each other, and respect everyone in the room, I just want to say thank you to everyone. I hope we continue to have nice, calm, productive meetings like that. Cyrus, I think you wanted to say something?
Yeah, just wanted to make one.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to make one quick comment. This is definitely a serious and difficult challenge, and it's not unique to the city of Ranch Cordova. We, we see that not only in the region, but also throughout the state. The one point that I would like to reiterate that Kurt mentioned, that we've done a lot to deal with this issue and related to this issue, the work that we do around the Mather Veterans Village, and also the, the work that we've done with, on Mather Community Campus, have really gone a long way to solve, or at least partially solve, some of our problems. And I think I can only imagine that our problems would, would have been far greater without the investment of time and money that we had made, that we have made so far in those facilities. Do want to take this opportunity and acknowledge our housing staff. Thank you for the great work we've done. We've, I also want to acknowledge our police department, our code enforcement, our Navigator. The program that we have been, been able to put together really on the hot team, we also have included the, our probation office, it will go, I think, would definitely help us to deal with some of the chronic issues that we face in our community. So, look forward to implementing that program, and we wish, be sure to report back on the progress that we make.
Thank you very much. You can clap for them, go ahead. They worked really hard on that. So with that, we'll move on to item 16.2, an update to city council for the Mather Rails to Trails Project and naming of the trail.
Good evening, Mayor Terry, and council members. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. We're pleased this evening to have an opportunity to present to you the Mather Rails to Trails Project, which provides an important connection across Highway 50, and another opportunity to provide new connections with. and another opportunity to provide new connections within our community. The goals for this evening are to provide to city council an update that includes the scope and schedule for the project, receive feedback from city council, and provide an opportunity for city council to select a formal trail name. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris Boyer in our Public Works Department.
Thank you, Albert. So to give you an overview of the project, we're installing a 10-foot wide bike trail along the Mather Field spur, the old spur line that was, that filled the Mather Airport. And from, what we're going to be doing is installing a trail alongside, along next to the trail, or the spur line. The great part about this project is the connectivity of what it does for the community. And you, as you can see, there's a lot of, there's huge neighborhoods that we're going to be connecting with this trail, as well as commercial businesses, as well as the Los Rios College and our RT Light Rail Station, and also the VA Hospital. It's a very, it's a lot easier access to get to the hospital through the Mather Boulevard. So with that, give you a little background, a bit of background about the project history. So in 2014, we received ATP funds in about $2.08 million. And we began to design at that time.
ATP would be?
Oh, I'm sorry, active transportation funds. Yes, yes. The grant was sourced. And that was the first round of the ATP funds that we were able to receive. And from there, we've met with public, we've met with a lot of the design team and received a lot of clearances from that time, environmental clearance, right-of-way clearance, approvals from the Public Utility Commission, and as well from Caltrans. And then that kind of led us to where we are today. And so it was a long, long process to get to where we are, but now we're ready to begin construction. We're looking to anticipating construction starting at the end of the year. So from there, to get a little bit closer information, we're going to be doing, again, the 10-foot wide bicycle pedestrian trail. It's approximately 1.3 miles of new trail that we're going to be adding and connections. We're going to keep a natural vegetation, natural vegetation or the natural look and feel, very simple aspect of most of the, for most of the trail. We're not going to have any trail lighting along this corridor. We're going to have it at select locations, but for the most part, the most of the trail will not have lighting. But we will be putting cameras up throughout the region. So very similar to what we've done in other locations. We've worked with the RCPD and finding locations where we want to have this, where we can have full coverage of the entire trail to help for safety purposes. So for anybody in those regions will be able to, be able to see what's going on. It'll be able to help PD do their job a lot easier from having these cameras up there. So what we mentioned, there's three locations, there's three trailhead locations. So entrances into the bike trail. There's the Mather Field location, there's a Rockingham location and the Old Placerville location. And these are highlighted because at these locations, we're going to be doing a little bit more. We're going to add a little bit more landscaping. There's going to be a little, a lot more of eccentric feel, a nice little look and feel in these locations to inviting residents into the, into the trail, as well as additional lighting. We're going to have some lighting at these locations to, again, highlight entrances into the bike trail. At the Rockingham and Old Placerville location, we're going to be, Old Placerville location, we're going to be adding in shade structures with seating. And so there'll be some benches in there, and then we'll have the nice shade structure. It'll be made, and very inviting for the residents in those locations, as well as the businesses. And hopefully for those people taking breaks, be able to go out there, sit and enjoy the area. At the bridge location, this is what the bridge looks like today. So we're looking to change all of this, we're going to be updating it, making it very similar to what we have existing. This is the White Rock crossing over Highway 50 in the White Rock community. We're going to be using the same features, the lighting features. And again, another location, we will have lighting as across this 50, as well as the same fencing that's going to be in there. So it'll be very, very similar look and feel as we see over here, so for consistency throughout the region. We want to kind of point out some location on the Mather Field Road section, the north of Highway 50. So here we have the trail alignment. It runs along the west side of Mather Field Road, as well as, we do have a break over here. And the reason why is because there's an active spur line for Pacific Supply. They currently use the, their access about once or so a week. And so because of that, we can't use that as a crossing, so we have to go around that. And so we used a two-way cycle track along Crayton and Mill Station to connect back into then the northern part where the RT station is. And so that's why the jog is there. So from there, we've been using the name currently, Mather Trail. And so we just kind of came up with the name for that. And so that's one of the reasons why we're coming to you, to see if you like the name or if you'd like to change the name. It kind of has the option for anything we would like to do with that name. So it leaves it open to you, the council. So the next step is we want to award the project to the contractor. So after we go through any other changes we'd like to make, we can, we can come back to you to award and then begin the construction by the 20, at the end of 2017. So we're looking for council to direct, city staff to incorporate any of your comments, finalize the design of the Mather Field, or the Mather Rails Trails project, and then to finalize a formal name for the trail as well. But with that, I'd like to open up to council members for any comments.
Do you have any public comment on this?
No, I do not.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Well, if you ask me, I'd call it the Mather Heritage Trail.
I was going to say the Mather Veterans Trail, or say something with veterans in it. Because it's going to the VA Hospital, that was.
I like Mather Trail, but Mather Heritage maybe, yeah. It doesn't go right to the VA. It's kind of the opposite end of the airbase, but it is, it is a better connection to the VA that we've currently got.
Yeah, no, I mean, it goes to a different part of the base, I get it, but we're never going to have a trail that goes directly to the base.
Base two.
I have a question about the lighting.
Sure.
Go back to about the third, when I said where it's a bicycle pedestrian, is that the project location, or is this where the light's going to be along the way? Reason I'm asking that is, it looks like we're going off at the side where the track is and kind of going away from Mather Field Road itself, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, because I know there's some people who, and this has been something that never has really ended, the people who go to Mather Community Campus are kind of uncomfortable going on Mather Field Road at night because there is not much lighting there. And since this isn't going to change that, then it'll, are you going to have lighting all the way across on the old abandoned track across Highway 50, or is that going to be dark at night?
Across Highway 50 on the bridge itself will have lighting. It's just that the other locations only at the trailheads are proposing to have lighting at this time.
And one assumes it's because between Rockingham and almost Old Placerville, it would pretty much shine down into people's backyards?
There is some of that. Also, continuity with the rest of the trails. We don't have any lighting on any other trails in the city, let alone in some of the regions. We haven't seen very many locations where you see that.
Yeah, actually, that's a, that's a good point. We don't have, we don't have it in Stone Creek.
Can I, just something that came up this past week, or two weeks ago when I was in Henderson, was they started using on-demand lighting for their trails? So it actually had motion sensors that would turn on when you're like about 50 feet away, and then it would stay on for 10 minutes and turn off. So, because they light all their jogging trails.
That might work with solar.
Well, maybe, I can't, I don't think they were solar, but maybe they were. Because in their, in their setting, nobody, there's large chunks of the year that you can't exercise in the daytime. It's just too damn hot. So most people exercise at night. And so they, all of their jogging trails, and I think they had 200 and something miles of jogging trail that they had put in, something like that, a very large, large number. Oh, it's a city of 300,000 people too.
That's a lot of light.
Well, but, and again, they retrofitted this into some of it. They had some of their master plan developers put it in in other neighborhoods along with theirs, but they use an on-demand system that basically left it on for about 10 minutes, and then it would turn off.
They also have dark sky requirements. But the other thing that bothers me, the only thing that really bothers me about that, if you all think about, think back to before we put in all our LED lights, and Smit had some of those lights that weren't on, and then they were sort of on, and then they came on. And that just drove residents bananas.
Oh, the blinking.
Oh, God. You know, either turn the light on or turn it off. So to the extent that there are people in there, from say, Rockingham to New Dawn here on the south, I'm not sure I personally want that in my backyard. I know that on International, where we've had these beautiful lights, then there's like two or three houses in there where you put the shield on it so that it didn't shine over their back, their back wall into their backyards. So if you were going to do something like that, I would suggest you put the shields on it.
So in their parks, they switched all LED lights, but the ones I'm talking about, I think were like eight feet high. And they, the band was very small. Now, we were walking around during the day, so I didn't actually get to see what they were describing, but the ones that they used, they were actually supposed to send me some of the specs that they had used for it, but they found them to work really well. And their parks director was an avid runner and said that it was one of the only systems like that that was in the West Coast.
Yeah, I think it's a good point that, you know, the trail will be along the backside, the backyards of all these homes, of many of the homes. And so you'll kind of see that in there. So you, we would have to use some sort of modified lighting, so we wouldn't do that.
I lived in that neighborhood. I would probably tell you that if you polled the audience along there, the number of people that have jumped into people's backyards in there, because that whole, that whole stretch along those rails are completely open once you get south of Rockingham.
Yeah.
And I think the first time where this ever came to us, I said, the thing we really need to do between now and whenever the heck we adopt this is fence that all in, because for now, it just, it leaves those homes as sitting ducks. Whether somebody's running from somebody and trying to escape, that's one of the, the number one places that if you're in that neighborhood, the number of my neighbors that somebody has jumped into their backyard for God knows why is just mind-boggling. So lighting, I would be really interested to see if everyone living on Nut Plains would really have a problem with additional lighting behind their homes. And the cameras, obviously, they would, I think, for sure welcome.
Yeah, the cameras, again, we're trying to, we will try and shield off from being able to see into the backyards of any home. That's, that's part of that, but yeah, you're right.
And no blue blinking light for those.
Oh, you don't like the blue blinking light, okay.
I do, but not in somebody's backyard like that. That gets to your point about the LEDs that would flash back on. Yeah, in a residential area of that, I mean, if you're going to put it right in somebody's backyard to where, you know, if I left my window open or if I left my blinds up to enjoy the moon, I don't want to see the blue blinking light in my backyard.
That's for sure.
Yeah, depending on how high they are, that could be a real issue.
Counsel, just.
I do want to commend you guys, though, on great outreach to that neighborhood. Because in similar, well, I won't say similar, in discussions that could be like this, where we talked about taking a drainage way and turning that into a trail, we've had, over 12 years here, had neighbors go crazy about how negatively they view the impact of putting a trail behind their house. Even though now it's an uncontrolled problem area, they view a trail as making it worse. So somehow you have talked to this community and brought them around to the realization that positive activity back there is actually better than negative activity back there.
Because they're experiencing negative activity.
Because they're experiencing, and it's, but that's a big barrier for people. So however you handled it, talking to these folks, kudos, great job, really great job.
We've had a few very vocal gentlemen that have been following it and asking questions probably about a couple, once a quarter, you know, finding out what the status is. And so they're, they're very happy and excited for it to hurry up and get done.
Yeah, I mean, I don't blame folks, because they'll naturally, people naturally look for danger, right? That's what we do as humans. We look for danger seven times as often as we look for benefit. So when you hear about something new like that, automatically it's, no, 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 no. Oh, wait, what, there's something good in there? That's our, that's our normal response. But it takes, it takes, you know, good handling, good education effort, so kudos on that.
Lots of diplomacy.
Yes, lots of diplomacy. I do have a comment. Albert and I talked about this project last week. And in that process, I remembered, the community council had an idea, oh wow, eight years ago. Someone had seen, it may have been Amy Hirmode, it was in Southern California, and saw a city that had erected a huge, like, Christmas display over a freeway and was known for this. And it was like a lighted tree thing, I think. And the comment we brought, we thought, that's awesome, you know, do something like that and make a statement. It's Rancho Cordova, you're sort of screaming for the holidays, oh, look how much fun we are, it's good for image. But the problem was, Caltrans would never allow you to do this on a Caltrans facility. Well, guess what this bridge is? It's not a Caltrans facility. If we wanted to do something artistic or fun on this overpass of Highway 50, this is our one shot in Rancho Cordova to do that. So I urged Albert, in looking at this, be sure you've got adequate conduit to get, you know, electricity to this bridge if we decide to take advantage of that. Because that might be, that might be a really great option.
Definitely light the bridge if you can.
The bridge will be lit in the, in the plan, but we could do something really, really cool here that we can't do anywhere else.
Oh, yeah, welcome to Rancho.
Yeah. We have fun. We have fun.
It looks scary, Donald. Love it.
And if it works for Christmas, it could work for Fourth of July.
Whatever, yeah. We could do all kinds of stuff on this bridge.
The Bay Bridge did a really cool lighting.
They did? Founded by PG&E.
It's true. Maybe Smit wants to kick in. Or Callan, there's a, there's a water pipe for that neighborhood, it's right there.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
So we still need a consensus for a name.
Counsel, while you're thinking about the name, can I just make a quick comment related to two items on this design? One is about the lighting. Please keep in mind that with lighting, there's, in addition to the initial capital cost, there's also an ongoing cost of operational maintenance for those lights. So, and really at this point, I'm not sure if there is a funding source identified for it. The other, the other one, and I really would like for, and Chris mentioned this, but I would like for you to elaborate on this. Unfortunately, because of two factors. One, because of Union Pacific, that we could not get the crossing approved. And also because of the limitations on the width of the road, we're not able to dramatically improve the section along Mather Road, which is unfortunate. So if you, you can show that picture. So I just want to make sure you understand that, you know, we will pursue our discussions with Union Pacific to be able to do something along this segment, but for now, we're just simply bypassing that section and going through Croydon to avoid all that.
Several of us have had this conversation with this one guy from Union Pacific, and the answer is basically, no. Hell, no.
This is the section that really can use some aesthetic improvements, but we're not able to do a whole lot because, mainly because of Union Pacific. I just want to make sure that you're not surprised by it.
What would be nice, though, would be if you were planning some sort of a little gate on the north side of Croydon, so that we can get rid of that dirt pile.
The dirt pile is actually there so that the trains don't go past it. It's actually cut, the line is actually cut at that point, and that's a deterrent for any of the trains to be able to go down there. So it's a.
Like a bumper.
It's a bumper, basically. It's for their safety. They actually do use some of that location. They'll kind of almost like park some train, some carts there.
Oh, yeah.
And that's the main reason. I don't think we can.
Counsel, council member Budge, we can definitely, their UP has certain, Union Pacific has certain standards that they're adamant about adhering to, but we can certainly reach out to them about the aesthetics of that and see what potential options there are.
I mean, we've all seen a kind of a triangular structure at the end of the line, as opposed to a pile of dirt that looks like somebody just dumped it there, which is what they obviously did.
That's all they did.
We can absolutely reach out to them and look for more aesthetic treatments.
Union Pacific has also sort of forced part of the trail onto the apron of Mather Field Road too, as well, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, the blue alignment shows, and that's part of that, you know, some of the changes and modifications we had to make throughout the process and in order to appease the Union Pacific. And so in the future, if it does become active, we'll be able to have other options. we'll be able to have other options to be able to keep the trail as well.
Well, and unfortunately, Anderson Pacific is not blameless in this, because after Light Rail was, was opened beyond Mather, they just moved their fence out into the railroad right-of-way, and nobody ever said no. And so here it is today, and they've got inverse condemnation, because they've been there for 10 years using it openly. They just extended their fence, because they wanted more space in their backyard.
Possession is nine tenths of the law.
It is. They're there.
Interesting.
I hear the comment about veterans. I think I like Mather Heritage Trail.
I'm fine with that. Okay?
Now, do we get to put the name on the bridge?
I mean, we could do anything, I'm sure, so.
Well, and I agree with you there, because we wanted to do that to the, when Caltrans rebuilt the bridge over the freeway. Why don't you figure out how to put welcome to Rancho Cordova?
Design options for the-
We might want to do a separate-
For the bridge.
Look at, look at every bridge that's been, every freeway overpass that's been constructed in the last 15 years, whether it's Elk Grove in two locations, or Vacaville, Davis, those are the ones that come to mind. Every one of them has, on their bridge abutment, somehow, has incorporated their, their city seal, a welcome message, something or other.
I think Cyrus reported this to us once, and I think each jurisdiction has allowed one of those.
It's one or two.
In the discussion, discussion that I had with, with them many, many years ago, I, I think, they basically said, we can allow you a, some type of a monument, one in each end, so that we could, we could do this.
Two entrances.
Two entrances. And so they have given us that authorization. They, they left it to us. At that point, if you recall, we were working on the Mather Interchange to improve the aesthetics, and we thought about putting something there, but we felt like this is truly not the gateway to the community. This is-
Oh, but you've got your birds.
But we got, we managed to get some other aesthetic and artistic features on that bridge.
We need one at Watt and one at Folsom. Those are the two.
I think it is two, but.
I think we-
Somebody tell me Hazel and Bradshaw. Prairie City Road. I like that even better.
I think at the time, from those discussions, I recall, we said that Rancho Cordova Parkway could be the, the one that we put the big, big kind of-
See, that's in the middle of the city. Yeah, that's not where, that would be the easiest one, because that's the one we're going to build. But, yeah, the most appropriate one would be-
How could it redo the Bradshaw interchange? So-
I'm not saying Bradshaw. I'm, I'm literally saying Watt.
We're not going to rebuild Watt Avenue either.
If you ask the citizens between Bradshaw and Watt, what city they'd rather be incorporated into, nine out of 10 of them would be here.
Yeah, we would win that one. Let's think about using this one.
Yeah.
We're going to build it.
Well, but we don't need their permission. This doesn't count as one of them. Right? We're doing something. We could definitely look into it. Yeah.
I, I would recommend that we do this as a separate, independent project, because we should not hold this up because of the federal funding.
Oh, no, I totally agree. Yeah, no, but come back to us with, with, maybe this is a Measure H monument sign inventory. Yes, you can run it from your house with an extension cord. There's a sale with Target, I saw it. Okay, any other direction for staff? You got what you need?
Counsel, may I ask, we had originally not placed lights on the trail. In keeping with the typical look and feel of trails in city of Rancho Cordova and in the region, and out of concern for light spilling into backyards, is this a direction that council would like us to look at a different way to placing lights? That was the, I wasn't clear on that direction.
I, I don't know. If, if no other jurisdictions in the regions do it, unless it's a really urban setting, where there's other traffic or other considerations, I don't know if I would do it.
And the-
I was just going to say, the, and I had never thought of doing it until this trip that I took, but, you know, they, they've run their jogging trails 10 feet away from the street with foliage or cactuses in between there, and then they have these paved running trails all over the place, and they light them all. And I get, we don't have the same kind of weather, but-
Okay. Donald, what you're missing is the point that that's why they need the, the lights, so you don't run into the cactus in the dark.
That could be part of it. But, but I will point out, and I can show everyone on my phone, if you don't follow my, my Facebook, that there was a day this summer, that it was hotter here than it was in Vegas or Phoenix. We're only getting hotter, it seems like, and we might want to think about how we design these trails for users that want to use them at night. Because if we continue to get hot, there, people are going to stop using the trails, because it's going to be too hot. And then people are only going to be jogging on, you know, treadmills inside air-conditioned buildings.
This is a really exciting time for cyclists in Rancho Cordova. The stuff we're doing lately, this, this improvement, there aren't a lot of jurisdictions doing stuff like this. This is really cool. Is there a phase two?
No, not at this time.
Wrong answer. What's the phase two look like?
Another bridge?
Yes, sir.
Overall, what we're-
Somewhere, somewhere connecting, I mean, I'd love for this to connect to Stone Creek, you know, somehow, some way. That'd be the, that'd be the obvious thing.
Yeah, the problem there is you've got to go over to Peter McEwen before you get to this.
In general, we are looking for opportunities to provide better connections to the river, better connections crossing over Freeway 50, better connections all the way down to the south end of the city of Rancho Cordova, and every place in between, bringing those together. This project, along with the Rod Bodry Rootier projects, along with the upcoming Zinfandel pedestrian bicycle improvement projects, these are all infrastructure that are really going to move us in that direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, how funny was it to read a story today about how innovative the city of Sacramento is being in parking, in parking cars in between street and bicycle lanes, as if they had found the Holy Grail of something we designed four years ago?
Yeah, and just-
Who knows, even if they didn't report on it.
And just to add on to that, we are kind of going after the, and following the path of the, the bicycle master plan that we do have in place, and this is one of these segments, as long as the, as well as the other segments that Albert enlisted. So as far as a phase two, as continuations to that, we are all always actively looking for more opportunities to continue that master plan that we have in place.
Folsom has been extremely successful in getting grants for their trail system. We might want to look over their shoulder and see, or talk to their folks about how exactly they're doing them. Because they have, I think, the total, Carrie Howell told me, something over 16 million now they've gotten in grants for, for trails.
Folsom has a trail system unlike any, any other, but they've got all the, and actually, and it's, it must work pretty well, because unless the police chief has any other comment, so much of their trail goes through natural area, and you never hear of nefarious activities, or people being attacked, or anything like that. And though they don't have lights on it, because it's out there in the wilderness, basically.
Got what you need?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we'll move on to, council requests for, for future agenda items?
And I would request, if everybody concurs, that we do a, it doesn't have to be a formal workshop, but just kind of a, an update on what the package of housing bills signed is all about, and what it could mean for us.
Okay. So with that, I'll request that we adjourn in the memory of the so far 58 people that passed away, and, is it 59? Okay. I was trying to check that in the last couple, 10 minutes. So 59 souls that were lost yesterday, and the over 500 people that still are in the hospital.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.